Okay, here we go. Six o'clock, we'll call the meeting or people better not act up. Pleasant allegiance if we could, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you for coming. Uh, we'll start our regular meeting. The first thing I see is approval of the claims. Thank you to our deputy clerk, uh, in the absence of our clerk taking care of that, we do appreciate it. I'm showing altogether the total for this month was four hundred fifty-eight thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars and five cents. Uh, do we have any questions, guys, by chance?
No.
No.
Okay, we would need an approval or a motion.
I make a motion to approve the claims as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye, motion passes three to zero. Next will be our approval of the six eighteen twenty twenty-five town council meeting minutes. Any questions there, guys?
No.
Nope.
Okay, we would need a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the six eighteen twenty twenty-five town council minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero. We also have approval of seven-one twenty twenty-five town council meeting, it was a special meeting that we held. Uh, any questions concerning that?
Nope.
Again, we would need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve minutes seven-one twenty twenty-five as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero. Next is our town manager report, Adam, please.
I submitted that to you guys, uh, do you have any, any questions?
I wanna just make sure real quick, I thought I had something I wanted to ask you, I apologize for not quite having it. And maybe not, it might be for someone else. Yeah, I did, I, I, I know what it was, I know you, says that you guys met looking into the water, I just wanted to get a little follow-up. I didn't say, uh, Brian and yourself met with another expert on that.
Uh, yeah, most of that conversation with, uh, Mr. Paykey centered around, uh, the, the sand, uh, filter.
Okay.
Brian thinks that maybe when it was back flushed the last time, it, it wasn't, it might not have been done properly and it could have been a while ago. Um, so he's looking into that and that could be a big, a big part of, uh, some hard water issues, did you wanna speak to the rest of it?
So, having the schedule, we're waiting on the towers to get back up, so I'll take the filter down for a day. And with one tower, it's kinda rough to make it through the whole day. So, once we get the towers all taken care of, we'll get the schedules in here, we got it taken care of.
And that should help a lot, or you think, only better?
We backwash it twice a week, I'm thinking what happens if somebody didn't do it properly, might have churned it up in there. So, we'll come in and inspect it and do full samples out of it, I guess, so.
Do you guys have any questions?
No.
I don't.
Alright, thank you, Adam. Uh, next is our superintendent of utilities, Brian, please.
Um, the north water tower painting project is pretty much wrapped up, there's a few other things they have to do to it. Um, it was put back in service on July seventh. Um, there was a change order on it, nine hundred dollars change order for a cable. For safety, for climbing it, you, it's just an apparatus you clamp onto that you go up and down, if you don't fall, if you do fall, it catches you. Um, that was a nine hundred dollar change order. And also, there's another twelve hundred dollars added to that change order and that would be painting the graffiti on the east tower. So, it's a total of a twenty-one dollar change order.
Twenty-one hundred dollars?
Yes, for the whole project.
Okay, I, I have that here, it looks like, I believe, only I need to sign this, I think.
Right, yeah.
Uh, but I, I didn't, I don't know if you guys will, okay, it's the total of twenty-one hundred dollars.
I read the sign, I didn't have any connection with it.
We would need to approve that though. And then give me the authority to sign if one of you could.
I make a motion to approve the twenty-one hundred dollar change order for the, uh, water tower, um, for the north and the east water tower. Am I right?
Yep, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero, I'll get that to you, Brian.
Um, a few weeks ago, people, you've noticed, we were digging on the corner of Minor and Albion Road, we had a water leak there that was very difficult to find. Um, but when we did find it, we had to cut the pipe out and, which created a boil advisory for vice. Um, vice is a dead end, water main. Um, I would like to add a line into it to make it a loop off from Row Road Street, which is like four hundred feet. Um, I am getting prices on that, I won't get sort of the pipe and stuff, but I'm probably looking at about fourteen thousand dollars, something like that. Time to get the asphalt and sand and stuff like that, to do the whole project. Um, materials is just under ten thousand so far in the first quarter half, but it's more.
Who will do the work?
We'll do that ourselves, I'm just bringing this up because, and that would help their water quality too by having that looped.
That's what's going on.
Dead end. And then, anything else happens on that section of line, we have more isolated where you're only limited down to maybe two houses would be off instead of, you know, forty-five or fifty, whatever we had shut off to do that, so. Through the boil advisory. Of course, when we do, well, they do another boil advisory to hook it all up, but hopefully that'll help them down in the future.
You'll come back.
Yes, get questions, I just wanted to bring that up, I know people see us digging out there, so. Um, like I said, last month, the Chester Street lift station, um, still waiting for contractors to come in, we're trying to have. Another thing is the drive to Cranberry, um, we did mow along today, um, we're gonna haul some stone out and fill in along the banks and, or edges, try to make it a little wider. Um, we're gonna work on the exit, just going on the road to raise it up a little bit, so it's not such an incline when going the road. And I'm gonna keep it closed off until we get a lot done, so, not to worry about cars going through or something like that, but we will be starting to work on that a little more in the next couple of weeks here. I did have to buy a hot water heater, not actually a hot water heater, it's just a hanging heater that's got a fan in it, it's bad in the water plant. Um, actually, the motor went bad, it was like four hundred dollars to replace it, the whole unit was like twelve hundred, so I just went down the street and got a hold of Alpha to come down and just replace the thing. It was twenty-two hundred and one dollars, time to get done with everything, install on it. It helps control the condensation in the filter and all that, so, if you'd have a feeling.
Yeah.
We should, it's above, but you should spare.
We should, we should.
I'll make a motion, we approve Alpha Heating Cooling to replace a heater, the water plant, for twenty-two hundred and one dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero.
Our generator service, I've asked for quotes from actually five different places and I've received it back to three. Um, I asked for one year and a three-year contract. And most of them just went to one year, then multiplied by three for three years, except for Evapar and they went, theirs was just a little bit different. But they come out, Dan Cummings was eighty-four fifty seventy-eight for one year and it was twenty-five thousand three hundred fifty-two thirty-four for three years. McAllister was eleven thousand eight hundred and twenty-five for one year, it was thirty-five thousand four seventy-five for three. And Evapar was sixty-eight hundred fifty-five for one year and twenty-one nine twenty-eight for three years. And Evapar, so we've used the last several years, been doing our service twice, I mean, over and over else, you know, I had issues with. I'd like to go with the three-year instead of the twenty-year contract.
They raised it a little bit from what their year, yearly is, is there a reason, just because they think for inflation or just?
Probably.
Everything going up, materials and stuff like that.
Are they trying to protect themselves?
Okay. And you wanna, you wanna look into the three-year, is what you'd like?
Do the twenty-one nine twenty-eight.
And when would this, when we, let's say we go with the three-year, when would that start?
Uh, as soon as I get a sign of, held into it this week.
And then they gotta still do the work yet this year, so consider year one?
They do one service a year on everything, and that's including the police, fire, everybody's generators, all of our lift stations. For three years, and any service we have done, since we're under contract, we get a ten percent discount and they will call on us sooner than they do anybody out of the blue.
Will twenty twenty-five be the first year?
Yes.
Yes, I didn't know they've already done it.
Well, they go from the time you sign it.
Okay.
No, we haven't had it done since, uh, the beginning of twenty.
Yeah, I didn't know we had it done this year.
No.
Any questions about that, guys?
No, I don't.
We, we always get them.
I said I don't have a good one this last year.
Yeah, we always do it. Just now, we get it for three years, instead of doing it every year, I guess.
And you said, we get a ten percent discount if we do the three-year?
Well, no, that's under contract with them.
If we're under contract, no matter what, not if we do it.
If it's a one-year, you get it for that one year, or if it's three years, you get it for the three years.
I'm good with three-year, if you guys are.
I'm fine.
Uh, make a motion, we go with Evapar for the three-year contract at twenty-one thousand nine hundred twenty-eight for the generator service.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero, so you have mine, just take care of that one, you can.
Um, another thing I brought a few months ago was Bob, David's last month, looking at three-phase transformers, building up our inventory, we just got a page on them. I actually talked to the lineman and we come up with four different ones to get that would cover a lot of different sizes if we had one go bad. Um, so far, I've got one quote back, I'm expecting a couple more, we jump a couple more, but we're looking at eighty thousand for just them four to get them done. The prices have gone up that month over the last few years, so, and, but the delivery time is down, it's gonna be like a ten to twelve week delivery time on them, so we'll get them sooner.
We don't have any backups right now?
We have two, we have a, well, we have five hundred on order, it's due in next month, and we have a five hundred that sits down there for backup now. And we have a lot of small, and we have a small one service, but.
Sure.
Not the three-phase, normally for a three-phase, if I have it go out, I can get one of the surrounding communities to get ahold of them to replace it. But with ours, the age getting up there, I wanna start getting our inventory, we have them on hand right now. I mean, for instance, like, we looked at a seven hundred fifty kilowatt, we can replace, you know, we can cover a seven, or a five hundred of that, or possibly we can cover a thousand that went out for temporary. Till we got that one born back in and replace it, but we just try to get everything covered, you know, if something went wrong, even if it's overkill, size-wise. But that's something I want to bring for next month, I'll get it. Um, my last thing is, with the PMBA business meeting coming up in October, and I would like to attend that, I've attended it the last four or five years.
Where's that at, Brian?
It is in Florence, Indiana this year.
So, it, it moves around?
Yeah, it changes.
You, you've been going for a little bit, right?
Yep.
How was it eight?
October fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, on this October meeting.
You will? You'll have someone in place? Or you'll have someone to attend in place?
I was in place.
Okay, I see. Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, I think anytime someone can approve, you go.
That's all I have, any questions?
Alright, thank you. Uh, next, uh, town marshal report.
I submitted my report to you, uh, a few days ago, I had two things on there. One was the meetup place, which was suggested to me by several people, by the community and all the enforcement agencies. Uh, we're currently already doing that in our station right now with custody exchanges. Problem is, they park in front of the gas pumps, they park sideways, they park, so what other agencies have done is they have created an area, which we have the area to the south of the police station, the parking lot that we own. They've created an area there where if a person's doing an internet sale, or you're selling a car, just a used car, and you're, uh, you hear these people going to places and people set them up to, uh, rob them or take their money or... So, this is the place that most people would be like, well, we're gonna do the meetup place and they build this property, like, no, I'm not doing that. So, there's a red flag, you don't wanna buy from this individual. Or if it's a custody exchange, um, it's a good place to do it. So, I have a couple of different ways, very minimal cost to the town. Uh, I believe I've got the camera donated, which will plug into the system that we currently have. Second, because we do have one, we have one more, uh, window left in our, uh, server to plug in another camera, so, that's for another day that we're gonna need to update that server. But the second thing is, is the asphalt, I believe, uh, me and Brian kinda worked it, we contacted a local asphalt company. I believe we're gonna have enough asphalt to do maybe two spots or something, so we could put two cars in there. Third thing was, is the signage, I contacted a, a design company that does some graphic work for us, and they're gonna be donated to sign and it's gonna have the three donors' names on it. And it'll say meetup place, and it'll be the Villa Police Department, emergency call nine-one-one, this area is under video surveillance. So, I'm hoping that maybe you guys wouldn't let me use the south part of that parking lot. Make two spots over there for people to, to do that, and I don't know if you guys have a plan on maybe resurfacing that while they're here, while they're doing the two spots, or maybe not. I don't know what money's left in streets or, or parking lots or that comes out of.
How do you guys feel about this?
I'm fine, I think it's good.
Thanks, it's fine.
Yeah, I.
How does it, they just get, people just, how do people find out about it, like, how do we?
We'll put, put, put it on connects and we'll put it, uh, you know, out there and, uh, it'll be a sign, it'll be facing two ways, one way will be towards the parking lot where the people park and the other one will face towards the street. And it'll have like a, I think the picture I sent you has two hands that hold together like this, and it says meetup spot. So, it's kind of a new thing, there's not a ton of agencies that have it, uh, but, you know, we're, we're, we're not gonna wait till.
Sure.
And the lot's, it's empty, so.
Correct, yeah.
It's, it's a safe haven for children and for adults and for all those situations, so, at minimal cost, especially if all the volunteers or all the people that's gonna donate is some legal, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Fine, yep.
Second thing I sent to you was, is, uh, with, uh, Bruce's sadness that we, uh, did have an employee that did die at work. Uh, one of our part-time, uh, office person does our protective orders, our gun permits, um, different type of things, two hours, um, two days a week. Uh, he had a heart attack at the police station, we did revive him, we worked on him, me and Chris on that. Uh, the outcome wasn't, uh, how do I would say, the outcome wasn't what we had expected, he had more damage and he ended up passing away five days after.
It's terrible.
But we do have an individual that's interested in that job, um, I did notice in the handbook, it said for full-time employees, that the town board had to approve it, but I just wanted to make sure we were okay to fill that slot with a part-time person, um, to continue doing gun permits and protective orders and things, and background checks and things of that nature.
So, you wanna hire to replace Bruce and this individual be part-time?
Correct, two hours.
Two hours.
And it's someone that you already know, they already.
They'll have to have a background investigation, because they will have, uh, access to, uh, background checks for individuals that are looking for employment or rentals, so they'll have to have a background check and not only they can pass that.
So, are they a police officer somewhere, or?
Uh, no, they're a civilian employee.
Okay, so Bruce wasn't either?
Bruce was a retired police officer from New York, but he was a civilian employee.
Okay.
For the Villa Police Department.
So, it's the same, we're just gonna hire someone to replace him?
And I don't see any reason to increase the hours, because he was able to get his hours done and, uh, get his job done in the hours, that was a lot to him.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine.
Okay, I have, uh, nothing else, your spillman report will not be, you'll get a double report next month, we have some issues with spillmen, so, um, I know you guys didn't get one.
Yeah, I have two things actually, and I do know that Glenn did go to, if you wanna tell them, you.
Yeah, I, I was gonna let you, I, uh, was asked, uh, we moved the trailer, uh, as you can see, if you were following the local next name, there were some people upset about it. The reason it was moved to East Albion Street was, is I did have a couple residents come to me and say, hey, we noticed the speed increasing out here, the trailer seems to work at the park, could you please put it out on Albion Street? So, we did that, one officer assigned that trailer, and you say, why does an officer has to be assigned to the trailer? Well, there's actually a lot to it, there's a whole computer program that has to be done, he has it on his laptop, it has to be changed from different speed zones, so the alert and the warning systems come on at different times. Um, there's maintenance on it with the solar panel, it has to be cleaned and maintained, so, there was so, such an outcry, we, it was pretty expensive, I believe it was a little over eight thousand, don't quote me on that. So, I called, uh, the, uh, place that manufactures it, and I asked him if there was any state bids anywhere in the country that we were able to get on their state bid. And she called back and said Massachusetts has a state bid for that exact trailer with the red and blue lights, um, and we were able to obtain that, I believe, I don't have it in front of me.
Here it is.
Um, the trailer itself.
This is the purchase.
No. Correct, was, um, six thousand two hundred and seventy dollars, so it's a little bit cheaper when, um, some states ordering several of them. And then shipping was, uh, six hundred and seventeen dollars, made a total of six thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollars. So, uh, public safety, we could pay for that in one month. But I mean, this one here would be one that we could still leave the one at the park. Um, we do have signs that are coming, they're just not done yet, and it will say, uh, that these trailers are being used in our community and, uh, to be aware of your speed. So, there'll be, I believe, three of those coming, but they're just not done yet, so, they were recommended along with these units, so.
If we were to purchase that, we could keep the one at the park, it, cause it seemed like that's a place that needs, and then this one could maybe be moved around.
We could start making a list of people that make requests to use this secondary, uh.
To different parts of the town.
Correct, and then Huff is the one that's in charge of that, so Huff would get that list and he would decide how long, depending on how much traffic flows in that area.
Are they ticketing people that speed, are they, I mean, signs can be there, but are they still, when, it was at the park, they still?
Um, I mean, we just had, we just worked on the stop signs, we just stopped a car the other day and that subject received numerous tickets, so, yeah, there are some people being cited. Uh, not necessarily for speed, but maybe other more serious offenses, so.
Okay, let me see that again, do you guys, I guess it's really up to the council, if we have interest in purchasing another one. Uh, I'll leave it up to you two, do you have anything to say about it, or if we want to, how long is this price good, Glenn?
I believe it expires September first, so it's good for a little bit.
And we could get it probably within a month, probably?
The turnaround time, lead time on that machine is, I believe, one hundred days.
Okay.
So, if we ordered it today, we wouldn't have it for one hundred days.
Okay. It's, it's at least a thousand, if not two thousand dollars less than the previous.
It's definitely cheaper than what we paid for the first one, yes.
Cause I think we had about eight, I thought we had like eight thousand.
I believe eighty-two hundred, if you don't know.
And this is sixty-nine, okay.
No, I'm good with it.
Any questions?
Okay, we'd have to make a motion if we wanna purchase it though.
I'll make a motion, we approve the purchase of a speed trailer from Customs Signals Inc. in the amount of six thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollars.
Is there a second?
From public safety.
To be used out of public safety money.
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero, thank you, Glenn. Anything else?
Talk about your east coast. Uh, going out to Bruce's thing.
Yeah, we.
Go ahead.
We, uh, I, we did attend, uh, the gentleman that died, that was our civilian employee, had, uh, he was the chief of police of Chichagaw, Newark, for thirty years, so. His family, uh, did not really have clergy, so they asked our chaplain to conduct the service in New York, so myself and, um, our chaplain did the funeral for them in New York. So, uh, we had approval prior to by phone call to approve, uh, room and, and, and our room stay. Um, we did take our detective's vehicle out there, cause it was marked and we wanted to represent the department. So, I did put a submission in for, I believe, a couple tanks of gas and a Cracker Barrel meal and a Wendy's meal. Um, the night that we got there, the family would not let us purchase our meal and they would not let us pay for the hotel, so.
Do we wanna make a motion to approve the gas and the meals?
We can, to be safe.
Probably should.
Yeah, just turn, turn it into the.
Yep, it's our, I think, our, that's all I'd advise.
We, we can, we can make a motion to make sure, that way it's, it's current.
Well, that way at least we have a cut.
Sure.
Andy, you wanna go ahead, you want me to?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion, we approve the, uh, reimbursement to the police chief for his trip to the east coast.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Glenn, thank you.
Thank you, Glenn, thank you.
Anything else? Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, uh, fire report, fire chief report, sorry, Casey.
Uh, see, for the last thirty days, we've had forty-three runs, thirty-two of them have been medical runs. The other were either fire alarms, false alarms, and then one gas leak, just a normal CO2 type gas leak. Uh, so you can see that, we also have a list of the places and everything that we were at. Um, we did have three this last month, on July eighth, three of our members graduated from the fire academy. So, they are fully certified in medical and fire at this point. Um, I'm getting ready to start, start the EMT class, uh, which will bring up my medical certs to, uh, a little bit higher of a level. That's a six-month course that I'll be doing two nights a week. And about the only other thing I have is our touch-a-truck event on September thirteenth. Um, we just said, I think we just started putting it out on Facebook and, and getting it out there. We are really hoping to have a bigger turnout than we did last year as far as equipment. Uh, we've been, I, a lot of the members on the department, we created a committee and they've really been working on trying to get some things, even some military vehicles possibly.
Cool.
This year, so, um, the thing that I would need for that, I mean, I don't know if I need to ask this month or next month, I don't know if it matters, but I would like to shut down Washington Street from Maine, uh, to the end of the school, which is, I apologize. Okay. So, that way, all the way in front of the school, all that area.
We did that last year, didn't we?
Um, yeah.
I don't know if we would do it this month or we would wanna wait till next month, since we're two months away, we probably should wait till next month.
Okay.
Other than that, I do not have anything.
Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is RDC report, I see there's a couple here. Anything, everything's going good, though?
It's going good.
Thank you, all five of you, I know two of you are here, but it's all five of you, appreciate it, you guys got anything?
Nope.
Nope.
Attorney, please, report, Bob.
Uh, the primary thing I'd have to comment on is the business, uh, the ordinance has been drafted for increasing the rates, as was discussed last month. Uh, FSG and Charlie Joyce were incredibly helpful in getting these things done, and, uh, should you have questions, when we get to those, I'll be happy to answer that. Otherwise, I have nothing else to add.
Guys? Okay, clerk treasurer report, deputy clerk, anything?
Um, yeah, I, um, we've been working hard on getting some, some things done that you guys had asked, and wanted to let you know that the, um, ability to take credit card payments from the customers, that contract has been signed. And our contact at, um, Invoice Cloud said they'll be contacting us the next couple of weeks to actually get that rolling.
So, maybe, maybe within a month or two, maybe?
And he said it probably is gonna take a three-month process to get it all to go live. Um, and then we did get a company card, a Visa card for Adam, and that's now in his possession.
Okay.
So, that's been taken care of as well, um, the Walmart card is still in question, we're still not sure what the status of that is.
Okay, maybe someone, when you get a chance, can look into that. Anything else? Go ahead.
Okay, since we are doing this all ourselves, we could use some help in the office.
Okay.
Since the clerk has not been in since, for a month, and she's been still learning, and I'm trying to help her out, and we're just been busier than. But, um, yeah, we, we would really need some help in here.
Understand, and it's more of a, I mean, I don't wanna speak for both of you, and even Adam, all of you up here. When we say we need some extra help in here, I don't think it's something that we want to last forever, but we need some physical help for a short time, does that mean a week, two weeks, who knows? And then maybe a lot of remote. So, I've been, been in contact with, with the state and different people trying to look into this, and we had, thought we had found someone, that did not work out. We actually have a couple of options that I was gonna bring tonight. I did share the email, uh, and I guess we'll just, we can talk about this right now, uh, and then, you know, we, we can even make a decision if we choose, but I wanna bring up how I think we should do this. Uh, I've spoke to a lady, and she's actually, there's not too many people that are really local that can come in, most of these businesses, you know, are, they're not in a, they're not in Noble County. Uh, there's a clerk treasurer in every community, so everyone I've ever talked to said, please call them, they'll help you, but that doesn't give you the physical help. As far as coming in, when I say physical, but they will give you the, the remote, the phone, the email, and I think you guys probably already do that, I bet, I'm sure you're already in contact. So, I think the guys had seen this too. Her name is Susan Elia, she's actually from Hebron. And so she sent some information and I shared, I think, Bri, uh, Brian, I'm sorry, Adam printed it all out. I think the way she said it, and I think this is the right way to handle this, if the other gentleman are okay, is maybe initially, we can kinda do something we choose, it'll be contingent, that she can actually come, she's willing to come in here, introduce herself, meet each other. And then kinda go from there, is, yeah, do we want her, is this gonna work? I would like to think it would, I've only spoke to her on the phone and a lot of email. There is, of course, cost to it, you know, that's, uh, it's an hourly wage, uh, she will want mileage, that's all in a contract, I won't divulge that at this time, but we will if we were to hire her, but. So, there is, there is an extra cost, uh, we are currently paying a clerk treasurer, a deputy clerk, and a front clerk, we will have to pay even a fourth, so the taxpayers would need to know that. That won't change if we decide to hire someone, so we just gotta make sure that's out there. Uh, I know you ladies need, I think we all know you ladies need help, uh, Brian and, or, Brian, I'm sorry, Adam himself too, I know you three are trying to do everything, so. I know you three are trying to do everything, so if the guys, I'll let them speak, if, if we think this is an opportunity with this lady. We could maybe hire her, but maybe contingent, for lack of your three's approval, verbal approval to us, that is. There is another lady that, uh, I have not got that information to Lisa yet. She is the clerk treasurer for Culver, the town of Culver. She is more than willing and wants to help too. But she has an audit next month, so she doesn't have a lot of time. She says she would come over here for a day or a half a day at least to get things started. And of course, that's even more of a phone and remote. So, I just got to get that to you, Lisa. I just, it hasn't worked out this week for me to, to really get that information, but. I kind of want to know what you guys think about this lady, and if we do want to move forward, I think it's the right way to do it is the opportunity for you three to meet her and her to meet you three. And make sure that's a decision we'd want to make.
Well, right now, Lisa's got a vacation planned on the end of the month.
Absolutely.
Definitely.
End of this month?
We had to wait till tonight, no matter what we would do, meaning to even decide if we want to or don't want to. There's others that I can, that I've been contacted by, but they're even further away. Uh, there's a couple real good ones. I read a lot good about what they're in Indy, but they're more than willing to come up here too. Hebron, I'm not positive. I think it's kind of over past South Bend, so.
Two hours.
It's about two hours, but that's about as close as we can get, that I can find, and, and she was highly recommended by the state, so.
Well, even if it wasn't a clerk, just some.
She is no longer, this, Susan is not a clerk anymore. She has a company that she does this, so she is no longer, she has been, but she's no longer a clerk.
This is what she does.
This is what she does now, and it's all right here, the information of her, her company, which I guess I could read that. Uh, Flex Local Government Consulting is what her company is called. So, again, I guess it's kind of up to you guys on how you want to do or what you want to do and what you might want to say about it.
I mean, I, I agree. I would rather come meet with you all and make sure you, if you're even going to be working with her, I would want to make sure you, all three of you are okay with it. And think you can work with her before we even do anything. I don't, I don't want to make that decision and then they don't like her.
I guess the only thing, Bob, is it's, how would we, how could we make this official tonight if they all make it and it all works out good to where we can still vote tonight?
I authorize the hiring of a independent contractor to assist and then you put someone in charge of making that decision. My recommendation would be that they'll you be put in charge of that as council president.
Okay.
And then you can designate a process, which right now, it sounds like what you're designating is that this person would meet with, uh, the existing town employees. And if things went well, then that would be your independent contractor.
Okay, Bill?
I, I agree, but something needs to be done because these ladies are running around and not getting their extra stuff done because they're too busy doing the clerk's job. So, we definitely need to do something.
Okay, so what we could do is, she's already contacted me again today, but I told her, she forgot we didn't have a meeting till tonight. She thought it was last night, so. Uh, there is a contract that we would have to sign. Uh, we, we could, I could get hold of her, hopefully maybe even tonight to see what day she could come. I don't know if it could be this week, I, you know, I just don't know what her schedule is. Hopefully at least next week, because Lisa, I think you're on vacation the following week, right? So, so we've only got one more. So, maybe if we could get her in next week for a little bit, and then it could happen, she could be in that following week, and maybe we could plan where she could be there that whole week while you're out, you know, too. Uh.
Well, and I am, I'm going to be here to cover payroll, so.
You're going to come in on your vacation?
I actually, I'll be back when it's time to do payless.
Oh, you're not taking, oh, you're, you're doing a split vacation, split week or whatever?
Yeah, I'm leaving on Friday and coming back Tuesday.
Okay, okay.
Wednesday is your free time.
All right, so I think what, are you, I guess ladies and Adam, are you willing to, to see if this can work with this lady?
Absolutely.
Again, all I've, I've talked to her on the phone, and I've emailed her many times. I've never met her. So, I can't promise any more than that. I don't, any of, none of us can, I mean, we all know that, uh. But I'm, I'm, I'm good with trying to make it happen and, and get the help we need. And, and, you know, I don't, I don't, I won't tell her, I don't know how long we'll need her in person, but I'll give her the, I'll give her the idea that we need her at least come in next week and do a, you know, kind of get to know. And then for sure, you know, maybe try to set a week where she can be here, at least three days or, you know, something like that. But maybe we can start getting her in here for a day and then maybe you three can kind of figure out when you might think you need her more than I could. Could you come back tomorrow, or can you do that next week all week, you know, whatever might work for you guys? Anything, Bill?
Nope, as soon as possible, I guess.
So, I guess we would need a motion, and then it would be like he said, contingent.
So, we want to.
And I'll, and I'll make sure you guys want to.
We want to invite her to come in to meet with these three.
Private firm.
Private with them, the private firm, and once that is done, you can get their input, and if they're good, then you will get back with her and offer her.
Yeah, and then we will have a contract that we all, I, I don't know, I, I would, it might just be something I sign. I guess I didn't look at quite the bottom of the signature part.
Like I said, yeah, so we can give the okay, you the okay to sign it.
Okay.
Yep.
Contingent on me.
Yes.
Okay.
So, how do you say her last name?
Alia.
Alia.
Alia, I'm not really sure.
Go ahead. I'll make a motion that we get in contact with Susan Alia and have her come in for a meeting with the clerk's office and the town manager. Uh, based on that, if everything goes well, we will have town council president then offer her a contract at that point. And we also give Phil the permission to sign the contract with her.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye, motion passes three to zero. Anything else, ladies? We'll do our best. We hope it works out, and that's all we can do is hope, and I'm sure it will. I, I know she's. She said she's done many things like this, so she's willing to come in. And maybe, uh, you can let him look over that tomorrow or something and see her little bullet points on all the different things she can offer. And maybe there's some that are more important than others that you might need from her. Okay, so next is new business. Like Bob had said in his report, we've been talking now for a couple of months, uh, electric, water, and wastewater. The unfortunate is we need to, uh, have an increase. And we had consultants, we did rate studies and so forth, and, uh, we, we have decided, we, we won't be able to completely finalize this tonight. We can suspend the rules and do a first reading, and then next month's meeting, we will have a public hearing that will start our meeting. We'll have a public hearing on that. If you do want to speak at that public hearing, we ask you to contact Adam, our town manager. The Friday before the council meeting, so we can put you on there, because it won't be, it's, it's an open meeting, but it won't be an open forum. But you are entitled to come to the public hearing and give your good or bad. There will be a rate increase. There's no other way we can do it. It affects all of us, anyone who lives in town. Uh, we've had to do it in the past, but it's been quite a while. I think twenty twenty-two, if I remember right. And I'll kind of go through a little bit, just so we know. The electric, we're going to have to do a ten percent increase, and that'll happen for five straight years. It'll be a ten percent increase each year for the next five years. Uh, the water will be a thirty-four percent increase. It'll be one time this year only, hopefully. Uh, and then the wastewater will be a ten percent increase this year, and hopefully not anymore. We will in the next two years do another rate study. Our electric goes through Wolverine. We have a contract right now with them through twenty thirty, but we're not locked in after that. So, that's why we have to do this, because it's going to double or even more if we don't do something at this time. So, by us passing the increase along to all of us taxpayers that we're doing, we will have another contract with Wolverine from twenty thirty-one through twenty thirty-five, correct, Adam?
Yes.
So, then hopefully that will keep us from getting now, there's, there's not a promise on this, but we're hoping water and wastewater is one time this year. We don't have to revisit that anytime in the near future. Electric, we're stating ten percent for the next five years. This was verbal from Wolverine, and I might be wrong, guys, so correct me. They said maybe as we get to that fourth year or that fifth year, maybe there's a chance it wouldn't have to be a time, correct? That was just a statement. It wasn't a promise. Yeah, but, so, anything you guys want to add to that, or?
I just, from the rate study and the people we talked to, they did say a bill is probably about forty percent already under what normal towns would pay. Um, so we've had it pretty good for a while. Um, it's unfortunate that it's now catching up to us. Um, but it's something we have to do. Um, this also includes, uh, Adam and Brian looking through the five years of making sure we're getting equipment updated. Making sure, you know, they have proper equipment. I mean, so that's all part of this as well. It's not just a hike and just to pay the bills. It's part of a plan too, for five years, um, that Brian and Adam put a ton of time into. Um, really appreciate that.
Bill?
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, like, like Andy said, the increase, yeah, it's going to help our cost, and it is passed along to all of us taxpayers, all the businesses. But it does allow us to keep equipment updated, uh, on all three of those infrastructures. It, it will help us in the future. So, again, this is hard, uh, you know, you never want to hear it. I, you know, there's a handful of others in our community I've been reading that they're having increases at this time too. Uh, I know Garrett's going to be close to a ten percent increase, I read, and they're right there beside us. Uh, they're a bigger town, so they, they have to do the same thing that we're doing. So, we're not isolated in this. So, again, tonight we will do suspend the rules and we will, first reading, and then we'll have a public hearing. Please contact Adam by the Friday before next month's meeting, if you would like to speak. And then we would make, and at that meeting, we would do our second and final reading, and those, those rates would become in effect. So, we'll start, uh, just in order. The first one is, would be for the water. It's ordinance number sixteen eighty-four dash seven dash twenty-five. It's an ordinance amending ordinance sixteen forty-two dash five dash twenty-two. Amending Schedule One of the Water Rate Ordinance to increase rates by thirty-four percent and other matters connected therewith. So, we would need to suspend the rules on that.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye, motion passes three to zero. First reading, ordinance number sixteen eighty-four dash seven dash twenty-five. It's an ordinance amending ordinance number sixteen forty-two dash five dash twenty-two. Amending Schedule One of the Water Rate Ordinance to increase rates by thirty-four percent and others matters connected therewith. Again, we would need a first reading, motion.
Go ahead, Bill.
I'll make a motion on first reading to pass ordinance sixteen eighty-four dash seven dash twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye, motion passes three to zero. The next one will be on sewage wastewater. Ordinance number sixteen eighty-five dash seven dash twenty-five. An ordinance amending ordinance number fourteen forty-one dash oh three dash oh five, fixing the schedule of rates and charges to be collected by the town of Avila from the owners of property served by the sewage works of said town and other matters connected therewith. So, we need a motion on suspending the rules.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye, motion passes three to zero. First reading, ordinance number sixteen eighty-five dash seven dash twenty-five. It's an ordinance amending ordinance number fourteen forty-one dash zero three dash zero five. Fixing the schedule of rates and charges to be collected by the town of Avila, Indiana, from the owners of property served by the sewage works of said town and other matters connected therewith.
Make a motion to pass first reading, ordinance sixteen eighty-five dash seven dash twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye, motion passes three to zero. Third and final, this is our electric. It's on ordinance number sixteen eighty-six dash seven dash twenty-five. It's an ordinance establishing rates and charges to be collected by the town of Avila, Indiana, from the customers served by the municipality, electric, electrical utility of said town and other matters connected therewith. Then we need to suspend the rules.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules for sixteen eighty-six dash seven dash twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye, motion passes three to zero. First reading, ordinance number sixteen eighty-six dash seven dash twenty-five, an ordinance establishing rates and charges to be collected by the town of Avila, Indiana, from the customers served by the municipal electric utility of said town and other matters connected therewith. First reading, please.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance sixteen eighty-six dash seven dash twenty-five on first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye, motion passes three to zero. Okay. The next is adoption of the new Unified Development Ordinance. I don't know where that.
Right here.
I don't have it.
Yeah, uh.
You have it.
Yeah, well, well.
There's nothing for us to sign. We just got to approve it.
We just have to approve it.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Nope.
Okay, I do not have anything with that.
Sixteen eighty-seven dash seven dash twenty-five.
Sixteen eighty-seven dash seven.
Dash twenty-five.
I just want to make sure it's not anything else. Okay, do you want to speak about this, my dear, real quick? It'd be easier for you than somebody.
Sure, I'd be very happy to. So, uh, the town of Avila currently has zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. It's a little bit out of date. Some of the procedures aren't, um, quite under the standard of what the state statute requires. And also, we've had a lot of changes over the years with best practices and things like that. So, the steering committee, um, has worked for a little over a year to put together, um, a new ordinance, which we're calling the Unified Development Ordinance. It consolidates the zoning ordinance and the subdivision control ordinance into a single document to make it, uh, pretty user-friendly for not only staff to administer, developers to use, and the general public to understand. So, um, the Plan Commission met this evening and to hold the public hearing on the UDO and gave it a favorable recommendation to the town council for consideration. Um, I'm happy to go into more detail about what each chapter contains or anything like that, if you have questions.
They, there were a, a couple of members from the Plan Commission, and then there was some local taxpayers that was on a committee that met for months.
Yes.
And months and months, correct?
That is correct.
And worked with you. The Plan Commission hired this company to more or less get everything in line and get us legal on everything. There was a cost to that, of course, uh, but it was well worth it. It took quite a long time, and there was a lot of volunteer work that went into that, uh, from a handful of individuals. It was, it was well passed needed. Uh, Bill, I don't know, he's the playing, you're the Plan Commission president. Was there anything you'd want to add along with her, by chance? Being the Plan Commission president, and you were a big part of this too.
Well, I, I'd just like, I guess, to reiterate that what Debbie said, that it's been, sections of our current ordinance are outdated. There, it's hard to find things in the, in the ordinances, and this, this will, I believe, make it a whole lot easier and a lot better for development in the town for the, in the coming future. So, I, I encourage you to adopt that ordinance tonight.
Okay, so if we did do that, we'd have to do all three. Any questions, guys?
I just, I just have one. So, with the, with this being updated, will these ordinances for this one overlap with our code of ordinance for general ordinances?
Um, it will be replacing some previous ordinances that were adopted, um, as far as overlapping what.
Well, I mean, we have this book now, but we also have a code of ordinance.
Your town code.
For the town codes.
It'll be a supplement to that town code.
Okay. No further questions. We would have to, uh, pass this in three, three different motions, if you guys have interest in that.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
I don't know which one of you want to, it's six. I don't know which one of you want to. It's sixteen eighty-seven dash seven.
Go ahead, Bill.
Um, we just, uh, suspend rules, right?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules for sixteen eighty-seven dash seven dash twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye, motion passes three to zero. Then we would need first reading on adoption of new Unified Development Ordinance, which is sixteen eighty-seven dash seven dash twenty-five. We would need a first reading.
Make a motion, first reading for Unified Development Ordinance sixteen eighty-seven dash seven dash twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye, motion passes three to zero, and then final and second reading on sixteen eighty-seven dash seven dash twenty-five.
Motion, we approve ordinance sixteen eighty-seven dash seven dash twenty-five on second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye, motion passes three to zero. Thank you very much, and thank you for everybody that helped. I know there's a lot of people that helped. Thank you. Alright, next is the C C M G twenty twenty-four pulver change order request, which I believe I have here, Brian, correct?
Yes, that is.
Do you want to? Do you need this?
No, I know what it was.
Yeah, you.
A lot of the overages come on, um, on those drive. When you start into the project, you start to see the elevations lay out a lot better than looking at a print. Um, I did a lot of changes, added more pipe over there in the ground, so the people didn't have to mow a deep ditch in a lot of places. And we also, there was a ditch that used to be from Rose Street, not quite Rose Street, but to the south of Rose a little bit, that ran all the way down to Trailer Court. We put a tile in and closed all that to make it better. Down there, so the weeds were under control and stuff like that. It was just, most of the changes I made down there was to make it better for the residents on that street. And I think it turned out very nice, the way it looks now.
Yeah.
Um, I've heard really complaints about the drainage, and I got that. And we, that was, I don't know, roughly thirty-some thousand was the overage there, but we're also under on some of the changes that we did over on Jim Dandy and stuff like that, that made it down to whatever the final was there. I don't remember what the final was, number, but.
The, the increase, the change order is gonna be for a total of sixteen thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars, which will now bring the total new contract sum, including the change order, will be one million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixteen cents. Again, the change order was sixteen thousand two sixty-five. We will need to approve that.
What's that coming out of?
Streets.
Street, okay.
Street repair.
And it looks like if we approve this, all three will need to sign this.
Uh, make a motion, we approve the change order for sixteen thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars, come out of street.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye, motion passes three to zero. Brian, thanks for all the work.
Yep, thank you, Brian.
Uh, next is Be Noble to Present their annual report. Hi there, thank you for coming.
Thanks for asking me. Um, so for those who don't know, I'm Donella. I'm the Executive Director for Be Noble, which is Noble County State Economic Development Organization. And basically, our job is to help people and businesses of Noble County thrive to the best of their ability. So I'm just gonna give kind of a highlighted overview of what we've been working on in the past, this past year, and then what our plans are for this year into next year. So, we have really been focusing on workshops for our local community. Last year, we held one very exciting about tax debatements and how that all works. We had, we opened that up to the region, and we had around seventy-five people in attendance for that. Then we did another one on zoning, which was very well attended, excuse me, and kind of like planning for that nature. So, we have a couple more that are coming up. We have a gentleman who helps small businesses grow by private equity, and so he's gonna talk in their third quarter about, you know, different options out there. If you say you don't want to go the traditional route by going to a bank or what have you, so really opening up our options for our businesses to grow here. We were doing H R roundtables, but as those were continuing, we realized that our attendance was diminishing significantly, so that's why we decided to add the quarterly workshops. We have been updating our worknoble.org, so if you are a business owner and you are looking for a position to be filled, we will highlight that position and share it on our Work Noble website for free for you. And with that, we have created some partnerships. One is with the Northeast Indiana Innovation Center. They come to Noble County twice a month, or as requested, to meet with small business owners to talk about everything from starting your marketing plan, succession planning, everything in between. So if you have a question about where your business needs to go, we have those experts readily available here for that. And then we've been working with the I S B D C, or the Indiana Small Business Development Corporation, as well, with Lynn. If you haven't had a chance to meet with her, I highly suggest that you do. She offers a lot of those same aspects. And it goes down to everything from resume building to, um, different, honing in your different skills. We have been working, really working on growing our iSmart Labs, so if you haven't been to the Community Learning Center in Kendallville, the iSmart Lab has moved up to the second floor, allowing a larger scope to reach more students, which has been amazing, and that was part of the Ready, uh, Ready One funding. And then, we've been really heavy in growing childcare within Noble County. So I don't know how much you paid attention to what the new legislative is, but a lot of schools and parents have relied on voucher systems for, to help pay for daycare and preschool. The funding has been frozen. So we've been, we're working on starting a new program where to help more in-home childcare centers become more up-to-date and be more, and to be licensed so that they're available for more funding, because parents can't afford to pay what it would be to say go to Kendallville Daycare Center, or something of that nature. So we're really working on growing those. We've established one new, or helped establish, one new childcare so far in Ligonier that will have up to eighty seats, and we're working on one in partnership with Central Noble as well. And all of that kind of correlates into the growth that Noble County has seen. So, last year, we had a hundred and seven million dollars invested into our community, which is proof that people are wanting to come here, and Noble County is great. And out of that, is around three point five million dollars was Avila, which is great, and that does not include the sports complex that's going on the other side of town. So that will definitely increase that as well. Another part of that is Ligtell has laid over two hundred and two miles of fiber, bringing home to, or bringing internet to over two thousand six hundred rural homes in Noble County. So, we are definitely an open-air community, and we want to continue to support our local businesses, and I think having Ligtell over other ones is quite nice. And then, one of our, another big pushes is STEM in manufacturing. So we have received a grant from Bosch to help fund STEM camps and programs in every school district in Noble County. So, we haven't fully advertised that yet. You guys are kind of the first group to know, really. So if you have a student that is looking, is it, that the school's wanting to do robotics, or if it's Boys and Girl, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, that are looking to get some STEM funding, we have that available. The process is super simple. You send me an email, and then Tara and I will hopefully get you a check. So it's, it's really exciting, because we know that STEM is very needed in our community like ours, because Noble County is still ranked number four in the nation for manufacturing concentration. So, we have a lot of those jobs, and we want to make sure that we keep the talent here locally, so we need to start that at a young age. When I said that we had a hundred and seven million dollars invested in our communities, that is through business retention and expansion, which, which is amazing. So, we are really focusing on growing our local businesses, because in this economy, it's easier to help grow our local businesses than it is to bring in a new business here. And then, we've been really working on focusing and growing the leaders throughout the communities. Our engaged noble class just graduated, uh, class number two, and, um, we are looking for applications starting here in the middle of, well, it should be August. They should be opening soon. But, I want to put this out there, so if you are a business owner and you are wondering what you need to do next to grow your business, please reach out to us. If you are a civic group, we would love to come out and talk about what Be Noble is doing, and how you all can help, and how we can help. So if it's talking childcare, getting more housing, or broadband, you know, let us know. And then, really, economic development is all about growing our community, so the more that we can be out here talking about what we're doing, helping, sitting at the table, keeping our mouths shut, and just listening, please, please let us know, so. That's kind of, I did a quick overview, because last year I took, I felt like way too much time. So if you guys have any questions.
Thank you for everything, though. Always, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, we appreciate you coming, too. Okay, uh, next is Ely Park Parking Lot Instruction Discussion.
That's, that's me. Um, so, I think we've talked about it in the past, uh, maybe last meeting. Because of the parking situation with the Ball Diamonds, it's brought up about trying to see if we can make more parking along the fence there, on the west side of the Ball Diamonds. Julie Ganger talked, she, she called me and asked to talk about, and see if I could talk about it. Urban Lay mentioned that he'd be willing to work with the town. I know we got options with Pulver, but, uh, I assume we'd have to put it out for bid, but I think it's something that's needed. That parking lot, it's insane, um, when we get a bunch of kids. I mean, it's, it's crazy. So I just think it needs to be, something needs to be done there, and then also, I think it would help out even the Freedom Festival a little bit, um, as well, by putting more parking there, too. But, I just, it might be something we have to talk about for twenty twenty-six, but I know Brian even mentioned that, you know, his guys could help out with that, to keep costs down, um, but it's something I want to at least talk about.
So just kind of restructure it the way it's set up. I know we talked about that equipment there getting moved, maybe the playground.
That hasn't happened yet, but yeah.
Which would open, I mean, that's only gonna open up so much. I mean, yeah, it, it's probably not as easy as it sounds, just go back here and make the parking better than it is, because it's, there's only so much room to make it, but the way it is set up, it's just, it's kind of all zigged around. Yeah, I don't, I don't know about this year. I mean, the season's coming to an end, but that doesn't mean we can't try to get someone in to look at it and give us some ideas, maybe. You know, whether it be Pulver, you know, Brian's assistants, or, or you said Urban Lay, I believe you said.
Yep.
Who's a local contractor. Maybe they could just, maybe what we could do is have them just look at it and see if there's some ideas. And if they get, if they were to get some information to us, you know, soon, maybe something could happen this fall, maybe. If the monies are there and the time is there. Not maybe something in the spring. I mean, I'm not opposed to it, it's, it's the children.
Well, I'll go, like I said, I won't speak too much for Jerry. Go ahead in your conversation with one of the other guys. As far as the drainage.
I know, Amy's been up there. Have you seen how bad it is when all three of them diamonds and the T-ball's gone?
Yeah.
Because of all the cars, you mean?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
So we need to get that parking lot done as quick as possible, I mean, it's.
But I mean, when I look at it.
That whole fence.
But when I look at it, I don't know what we can really do. To make it better, the way it's set up and landlocked, and the way that the ball diamond fences are, I don't know how you, you don't just move the diamonds around, so I don't really know what we can do.
With the plan that the previous park board put together, they already had that designated for parking in the west fifteen acres, all along the fence, where the fence row is right now.
On the, on the outside.
So, what, I said, I have a call-in to Mr. Pulver currently. Um, so what, we want to, because to me, that's the best thing to do with the entrance into that area on the other side of, it used to be the park's his property. You know, that's where the entrance would go in, and I don't remember how far in, and then it turns behind the houses, and then heads up towards the Ball Diamonds. But with the way the elevation and everything is now, as I said, I know Jerry has talked to another guy too, and he says there's some things we can do, but you know, one of the things to do it the right way, to get it started, I mean, the fence needs to come out, it needs to start leveling the property. I know I've talked to Brian about that a little bit, too. But to go through to level it off, at least get the parking, and once that part's taken care of, at least for the start, you know, then there's also, will be a discussion about channeling the water over to the ditch that runs through current Luter's property.
You would have to.
Which, that would be a talk with Luter, and then also, that would lead to a talk with the county commissioners, I'm sure, before we can put any water in that ditch, even though it just goes out to Kings Lake. I don't know, Bill, is that something that, you know, you've dealt with them more than anything, is that something that is feasible to do?
Well, I believe there's a drainage down already in there. And whether, maybe not by, no, maybe it's just not working right?
In the park right now? Into that corner.
Down to the drain.
Right. So that, you know, that's just one of the things, but like I said, we have, and I know with Urban, but I'm just waiting on a call back now, but yeah, like I said, that previous park board spent, you know, ten grand to get this whole thing drawn out, and Jerry and I have talked a few times, and that parking is, has to be the first thing. So once that's done, currently where, where the drive and everything is into and around to the back diamonds will not be accessible anymore. That will be completely cut off.
There's crops.
Right now, you know, I mean, we can't do anything until the crops are.
Yeah, stop that.
So that's gotta get done before we do it.
I just thought we can at least talk to Pulvers, talk to Urban.
Yeah, absolutely.
Have Jerry reach out, get quotes, see what they would.
Some ideas, things like that.
At least get something going. We have drawings already made up. I mean, we can utilize those drawings.
Yes.
And see what they think about that, and then if we can just get some quotes from them. I know Pulver does a lot, but I also would like, you know, give Urban a shot, being local.
Well, you should get at least three. You should at least get three.
There's also two that, they're starting to re, maybe three, or old three or something?
Well, that was, that was a discussion that I was gonna bring up, too, with, and I'm not sure who's doing all this, but once they start, you know, once they start milling the roads, Jerry and I talked about that also. If that's something that we can use, instead of paying all this money for gravel and everything else, if we can just use the millings for the drive and parking lot, we've done that before. What's that? So they wouldn't give it to us, opposed to trucking it, who knows where.
Every conversation I've ever had, it would not be free.
Yeah, it's hard to get it for free, but, but it would be cheaper.
Okay.
Than your payment or buying your.
Be a discussion then at that point.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm open to that, of course, uh. But I think if we, I think if we want to have somebody come in and look at it, and give us a quote, and if Jerry or if you or whatever were to do this, we'd want at least three, at least three quotes. And we'd want at least three quotes, is what we would want. Go ahead, my dear. Sure, sure. Yeah, you're right, Bill. I mean, that's the truth.
Yep.
Well, you, I mean, survey and drainage's got to be done before you ever do anything anyhow. We'd have to make sure, and that's where the experts would come in, that there'd be no, if we were to put a drive out along the west side and put a parking lot, we'd have to make sure that there's no drainage for any of the homes.
Right.
And the parks. Those would all have to be included.
Absolutely.
But that's the responsibility of who we would look into doing this.
That I can work with Jerry on that, too, so.
Anything you guys want to say about that more? I mean, I'm open to, to it.
I just want to keep the conversation going. It's needed. I feel like the Villa Ball's gotten a little bit bigger in the last few years, and parking's just.
It's coming back. It's good.
Parking's just, uh, getting to be really bad.
Absolutely.
Good.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
No, we just set it over so that Casey would have.
No, we just sent it over so that Casey would have an opportunity to address that thing.
Oh, I didn't think you had it ready. I apologize.
Oh, we tabled it last time.
I know we tabled, but I didn't know you finished it. I'm sorry.
No, no.
That's why I was asking before I brought it.
Casey didn't receive it, so we'll table it for next month and I'll get with Casey.
Okay.
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 Okay, what we had for old business was revisiting the table, burning ordinance. We're gonna table it again for one more month so our fire chief and fire department is aware. Okay, uh, we'll do an open discussion if there's anybody has something, uh, for a couple little minutes here. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say or add? Go ahead, Diane.
There's still nothing being done about the cars that are plated and that are still, like, there's a couple yards that, there's four or five cars that are trash, that no one's addressing it and then someone la, or the last meeting I came to, they said it'd be trespassing upon the property. Well, people in all the cities around us, Albion, Garrett, Auburn, Kendallville have law enforcement or code enforcement person, if it's the town, um, m- manager, if it's the police, I know he's busy. I, I know the police officer is busy, but he's got a lot of calls and he's busy, but something needs to be done. We have a house on Lewis Street that looks like a jungle, that invites rats, snakes, mice, rodents. And it's not just, if they don't wanna take care of their property, it's the people around them.
Understand. Yeah, and, and we are all dealing with homes like that. I mean.
Right, but something needs, nothing's been done. Nothing's, I mean, if you don't wanna send a, um, if you don't wanna go to their door, send them a certified letter that has a receipt return. You'll know that they got it. If they don't clean it up, give thirty days, they have to, they pay a fine. There's something needs to be done in Avila. It's, it's, I mean, it's, and it's just a couple of places, but it's like, it's disgusting.
Well, understand, we understand your concerns and we all have those same, Diane. Bob, I don't know if there's something you wanna add, cause I know that's something we've been doing, attempting to address.
There, there came up the issue of looking into hiring someone who specializes in this. Uh, Andy was put in charge of, uh, looking into this. I've been working on this. Code enforcement is easy to say it needs to be done. It is not easy to actually do. Uh, we don't have the scale to do things like Auburn to hire someone to do code enforcement, have the infrastructure in place. We need to build that. And we have ordinances in place for the ordinances. Don't spell out what happens when someone's actually in violation.
They just rip up the certified letter, is what they do.
They don't even, they don't even take it. Most time they don't take it.
It's not like it was in the past. These things were easier to do, towns would play the rules. There is a statute out there that lets towns sell junk cars, but it hasn't been updated for thirty years. And so now every junk car exceeds the price, which you could have it removed and then sold. So now you're stuck storing it until you can get a court order. And so putting something together is, is not as easy as saying there's a problem. That's what we're working on.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I have been talking with Bob. Me and Bob have been trying to work on this. I talked to one community member about getting a subcommittee. I'm gonna be talking with Casey and Glenn about adding to that. But I need to make sure me and Bob have things in order before I just put a committee together and don't, and we don't know what to talk about. So it's slow, it is, it is moving, but it's not going as fast as I want it to go. But it's something I, me and Bob have been talking about.
And after the last meeting I had to talk with Glenn, Glenn made some very good points about not directly involving the marshal in that and I think Glenn's points are worth it.
You know, to, to give these guys a little bit, there are some things that we are doing in our spare time that we do. I've received, uh, how many messages have I got from you on stuff that's on the street? Stuff that's on the streets, expired plates, um, vehicles that have flat tires on the streets, that's totally enforceable. And anyone that you have gave, gave me, I've responded back saying either moved tire fixed, vehicle plated. And we will, if you have an expired plate on the street, we will tow your car. We don't have to wait, we don't have to do anything, we don't have to have an ordinance. So, but there are some issues that, you know, we're taking care of where people have pulled a car from their driveway out to the street and, or we said, well, here's the deal. If it's out here, it's gonna be on the back of a record, so you can either get it fixed now or get it on your property.
So it's a big concern with you, Diane, and all the taxers, but it is with us too. We are working on it. You, you made a good point, that there's not a whole lot of them in our town, but the ones we have are bad. And they are gonna get addressed. Can't promise today. Bob and Andy, you know, we're, we're, we're working on that. Can things be better? Of course, but they will get better. That's all we can say at this time. But thank you for bringing it up, cause we need to know. Go ahead.
Um, what grants are currently on the table written for improvement in Avila? I haven't seen anything about grants coming, grants being written.
What's happening right now?
Grants sent out. I mean, we have a fire department that they want to expand. Are we doing anything to help them out? I mean, our town, we need more room at the fire department. I know that. The, I mean, there's sidewalks and I know there was a sidewalk ordinance that you could, um, but there has to be something out there with the grant to be written. Our sidewalks on Main Street are awful. Trip hazards, I don't know. I mean, I don't know if it's, if you fall on a sidewalk, if that goes to the city or the homeowner.
Homeowner.
Ten feet, yeah, but ten feet from the, the road is the city's, um, easement.
I can't speak for any grants we have at this current time, but we do apply for grants. And whether it be our fire, our police, our utility, yes, you can.
Well, currently, uh, CCMG twenty twenty-four, which we are just finishing up, CCMG twenty twenty-five, which, uh, Brian and I are currently working on. We got a grant for the water tower from the, uh, from the TIF board and we are looking to reimburse that through Ready Two Grant, which she helped write. And there was also a stellar grant which we applied for, which did not go through unfortunately, but nothing ventured, nothing gained. So there are a number of different things that are being worked. That's just off the top of my head.
Are those things that have just come in, in the last year, or they were written to get the money like one or two years ago? Or I need to know what's coming.
These were recent, within the last year, uh, twenty twenty-five, CCMG has been working on that now.
I mean, it's, it just seems like it's kinda at a slow pace that nobody's really improving in Avila. It's just.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure how fast.
I mean, we just redid all of, we just. No, we just redid all of the sidewalks on by Hill Gas, Lay Street, Sammy Drive, all the streets and side, all the streets and sidewalks got done there. That was part of the. That was part of that. Um, that was part of CC, CCMG, correct? Um, just added all the sidewalks to.
First Street.
First Street, then also over by, I can't think of it right now.
First Street was two years.
Hippen Hammer, what's the road?
Autumn Hills, right.
Autumn Hills. We just redid all of those, um, Autumn Hills Drive. That was part of CCMG, correct?
I was thinking we need to look forward and what we can do to improve.
Well, that, that's the CCMG twenty twenty-five. I mean, that's what they're working on. That'll go into.
Which will happen in twenty twenty-six.
And then that will happen in twenty-six. So you get those done and then it's the next year, is how that works.
So is there something we can help the fire department out to get their building incre, I mean, I'm not saying it's, but it's part of the town.
Believe me, I, I honestly appreciate you bringing that up and being concerned about it. Um, it is a need. One construction company that came out and gave us a, a bid on things, but I asked for a drawing because I wanna make sure the building's set up correctly. I tried calling three times and apparently they don't have voicemail at their company or anything and it says, push a button for this person and I pushed a button for that person. And I literally today sat on with, with the phone ringing for two minutes.
I just know it's a concern and I.
And I, like I said, I very much appreciate that. Um, I kinda forgot. I have asked State Department for a ten thousand dollar grant for equipment and things, so that is a grant that I've been working on two years. But, I, when it comes to fire department buildings, I haven't been able to provide too many grants to that aspect.
We've been looking at a USD, USDA grant for the, the fire department, but it's tough to get and the granters are.
Well, that's what I was, that's what I was gonna add too. We can put in for every grant, any grant, every grant, we also have to have money to go into that grant too. They're not free. I mean, we have to turn around and put money in with them too, so, you know, you have to pick and choose what we wanna do, so.
But I, I, your concern's awesome, but I, I do believe Diane, that we do try our best with grants and we put in, we put in application after application. And, and I believe behind you can speak for all that. She's a big help to us and you can, you can rightfully say that this town is doing anything it can to try to lock in any kind of money you can at any time you can, but it doesn't always work out that way.
Yeah, and with the new state budget, there's not a lot of federal grants, so one of the big ones that towns use is OPA. They only have guaranteed funding for, till the third quarter, fourth quarter and on. They're not sure what that's, what that's going to look like. Also, I can get you some contacts with some good architects that will actually return your call and have voicemail if you want me to send them.
No, I would appreciate any help I can get on this.
So, and then I will say, as Be Noble Inc., one of the things that we have available to the community is what's called our investment trust fund. It's a separate thing of money that we receive from seed funding through the county that, um, we can offer out to businesses needing, things like in order to grow. For example, um, with some of the Ready Two applications, you have to have a certain amount of matching. Government, public, private. Um, so we've had organizations come to us and ask for, for that type of matching, um, for that. But we can also help with fire departments and things of that nature as well, so I'll send that to you. But, um, if we receive any grants and, cause we have all those connections to the state, as we receive those grants, we make sure that we send them out to all of the different town managers, mayors. Because as the year continues, funding is gonna get harder and harder to come by, so one of the things that they look for is that big collaboration.
Thank you.
And Tara, Tara has even helped with.
Oh, yeah.
Private, uh, privately funded grants like, uh, T-Mobile, uh, which we applied for that grant for IT upgrades. Unfortunately, we did not get the grant, but you don't get grants unless you try.
The effort is there. Yes, one thing.
See, that's the local state grants, you remember, state grants were ten thousand dollars, ten percent of whatever you had, so for a hundred thousand dollars. That money has to be put in the budget prior to year to it. We have not been able to, with our budget constraints, to be able to do that. And those are almost, uh, I think they're almost obsolete pretty much, pretty close. So local matches, uh, even if we were to apply for something, if we couldn't get ten thousand put into a separate fund and then that ten thousand, the thing where the council goes, or if we don't get it, we've allocated that ten thousand dollars, that's a lot of money to allocate on a baby. So for law enforcement, that's kinda what it sets up, which, uh, during the Bush administration, lots of grants, tons of cops grants. Those are all by the wayside.
Well, thank you everyone for coming. Thanks for the participation. Uh, we will call this now at this time, if we could, please.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero. I wanna give you this stuff. Those are all. All right, you do that and come back up here. Thank you.
All right, bud, we'll see you later. Be careful.